Yeah, all right. All right, I will call to order the county council meeting on April 11th at 7:30 PM. First on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in its own.
Roll call, please.
Alder Allen.
Present.
Alder Radifrada.
Here.
Alder Gerhart.
Here.
Alder Herps.
Here.
Alder Maldonado.
Here.
Mayor Richardson.
Here.
Alder Strassman.
Here.
Alder Udell.
Here.
Alder Wheeler.
Here.
You have a quorum, Mayor.
All right, thank you. All right, first up is mayoral proclamation recognizing April 15, 22, 2023 as Dark Sky Week. We've got a couple of guests with us here today. Up, right up in front and center. All right, I'll read this first and then have you introduce yourselves. So like I mentioned, we're recognizing April 15, 22nd as Dark Sky Week, whereas is recognized that the continued existence of light pollution as a standard living condition for over 83% of all people has clear detrimental impacts on the health and wellness of every citizen of the city of Pittsburgh, regardless of where in the city they live and on the health and survival of the wide diversity of wildlife and habitats within its urban borders. And whereas light pollution represents a waste of natural resources, leading to roughly $3 billion per year of wasted energy in the United States and contributes to diminished energy security. And whereas the city of Pittsburgh has a proud heritage of incorporating green spaces and engagement with the natural world is valued and prioritized in the decision-making process of city governance, and the safety of every citizen is a fundamental product of this effective governance. And whereas the city of Pittsburgh is the home of the former University of Wisconsin Madison's Historic Student Observatory, now rededicated as the Belle-Bernale Observatory, is close proximity to the US UW Space Place, the Madison Metropolitan School District Planetarium, and the Madison Astronomical Society, as the city recognized as a center for the exploration of the universe through research and educational focus on the science, technology, engineering, and mathematics through which we explore and engage with the cosmos around us. And whereas the five principles of responsible outdoor lighting promoted by the International Dark Sky Association state that lighting must be useful, targeted, at the lowest useful intensity, controlled to be ON only when needed, and of the warmest possible color. And whereas the city of Pittsburgh encourages the use of dark sky lighting in development projects, and whereas light pollution is an issue that can be greatly impacted and mitigated in its negative impact through effective education, development of community awareness, and action steps to focus on light pollution issues. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Aaron Richardson, Mayor of Pittsburgh, Wisconsin, hereby proclaim April 15 through April 22, 2023, in alignment with the International Dark Sky Association, as Dark Sky Week in the city of Pittsburgh, and ask each resident to join me not only observing and pondering this important week, but also in raising awareness and support for protecting our dark skies resources. And we've got a couple of people with us that who actually reached out to me and asked me to do this and was happy to do that. I know we've talked a lot about dark sky and making sure we have cut off lighting, and so it seemed very appropriate. I know that we're looking at updating our standards as well. And so we've got Ben from the Madison School District Planetarium, and we also have Lisa from BTC, Amy, sorry, Amy, from BTC, part of Promega as well. Do you want to talk a little bit about kind of what you do at both places maybe? And I reached out, I know there's a group of people that you reached out to me with.
Sure, very briefly, I'm Ben Sensen, Director of the MMSD Planetarium and amateur astronomer. And we're just aligning with the International Dark Sky Association, trying to recognize that it's the most selfish and greedy thing we could ever do to have effective lighting because it reduces carbon footprint, saves us money, and makes our communities actually safer. And so we are reaching out to all the communities of Dane County, and we'll do so again next year. And do this all over again, trying to get unanimous coverage of the municipalities in our area.
Sure, sure. Thanks, Ben, for, first of all, bringing the proclamation to our attention. So I'm Amy Prevost with the BTC Institute. I'm the Education Director, and we are starting to run programs, educational programs, at the Belle-Bernale Observatory right up the road. And so this is, of course, you know, of interest to us as well, and we're really excited and thankful that you're willing to do this. Okay, thanks.
And if you have some copies.
Thank you.
Know if you know something else that might...
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Oh, 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 more.
Thank you. Okay, thanks.
And we also have one person that wants to speak on a non-agenda item. We have Jason Ladwig here. Jason, if you want to come up and speak to... Jason, you're up. Yeah, the non-agenda items right away.
Good evening, I'm Jason Ladwig. I'm with the Fire Department. I'm the Union Rep for Firefighters Local 311. I'm here tonight to formally invite everybody on the council to Fire Ops 101. I sent an email to everybody March 31st with this flyer to give you guys a heads up, but like I said, I wanted to come here tonight and personally invite everybody to it. What Fire Ops 101 is, it's you get to do our job for the day. And you're going to have four Pittsburgh firefighters there as your instructors or as part of the instructor staff. You get to crawl into a smoky building, search for victims, do auto extrication, and run an emergency medical call. We ran this in 2010 at Madison College. The council and the mayor at the time were invited, and nobody came, so that was kind of disappointing. So hopefully everybody can, or not everybody, but most of you can put that on your calendar and come, and it's a great learning experience. On that email that I sent everybody is a link, it's a YouTube video, that explains exactly what Fire Ops 101 is. So I'm open for questions. I had my phone number and my email address on that email, so if anybody wants to reach out to me with questions, I hope to see you all there. Thanks.
All right, thank you very much. All right, and then that's all I have for non-agenda items. I'd have a couple of people that want to speak on the consent agenda, so first I guess if we can do a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Jay.
Second.
Sent by Randy. First, it doesn't matter to me, Leslie, do you want to go first and speak?
I'm Leslie Jorgensen. I live at 2325 South Seminole Highway, right at the end of Seminole at Wayland. And I am talking, I know this, you're going to send it through to the next committee, but I just wanted to get my word in here about the conditional use permit for Pittsburgh Hills coming up, and I'm opposed to this. It's, Pittsburgh Hills is the company that owns the land just east on Lacy, or west on Lacy Road, and Yahara Materials will be the company that will be removing the stone from the proposed quarry. I'm not in agreement with this because it's next to the Edgewood College's new sports complex land, and I think that's not the right thing to have right next door to where all the students are going to be. Although it's on land that, according to the Pittsburgh's 2030 Growth Plan, is in the South Stoner Prairie Development Area, it's not the development that should be needed in this area or put in this area. There are currently three quarries within a mile, as a crow flies, to their proposed quarry over here on Lacy Road, including Hammersley's right next door, Payne and Dolan just to the north, and Wingerstone just west of Verona Road. We have plenty of truck traffic associated with those quarries, at least coming down Seminole Highway. This property that is just east of the planned neighborhood at the corner of Lacy Road and Fitch-Rona Road, and I've seen that at some of the meetings online, that you're already discussing and getting the approval for that neighborhood, I can't imagine anyone that wants to buy a house in that neighborhood is going to want to buy a house there now knowing there might be a quarry a quarter mile away. Lacy Road is being upgraded with bicycle lanes. Now we are going to fill that road with dump trucks? We are aware trucks will be able to go north on Commerce once that's opened to Lacy Road, but how will the trucks head south? Will it be down Seminole Highway or will it be down Fitch-Rona Road, which is a terrible road right now too, we all know, needs to be redone? Also, their cup says nothing about the total number of trucks expected to leave a quarry. Their cup does say they will probably be bringing back Phil to the quarry, so that will increase the truck traffic. Pittsburgh is known as a bicycling community. We do not need any more dump trucks on Pittsburgh streets or the county roads. In closing, I would also like to add that the company removing the materials, Yahara Materials, has received two citations in the last two years for failure to obtain stormwater discharge permits that were required by the State of Wisconsin. They were required to pay a forfeiture for each occurrence, a $3,800 forfeiture. This from a company that has been in business since 1955, and they still don't know what the rules are, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mary Ann Berger, you are next.
My name is Mary Ann Berger. I live at 2350 Pittsburgh Road, which runs parallel to Seminole Highway. A few years ago, Yahara Materials proposed to have a quarry on Grandview Road on the Bob Wolf property. Our neighborhood opposed that for many reasons, many of which Leslie has already spoken to. We were successful in doing that because eventually the Wolves backed down from selling it to them and understood the plight of the neighborhood. We may be in a rural area, but we are part of your city and cannot be dismissed for a number of semi-trucks carrying gravel down the road. We understand the need for gravel, but what we really want to see from you, if you should pass this conditional use permit, are conditions and resolutions to those conditions, fines, and stopping the service. I don't know if there was a public hearing on this, I know there was a neighborhood meeting, though we are not within whatever half a mile of the quarry, we did not receive it. I did not see a neighborhood invitation for anyone to come to that meeting. I know some of our neighbors did go because they heard about it through the Rural Ag Committee, but we did not. Speaking to the bicycles, we enjoy having the bicycles on Seminole Highway, not necessarily on the highway, on the bike path. But as you know, if you've ever traveled down Seminole Highway, those bicyclists who are really out there bicycling don't stay on the bike path. They are on Seminole Highway because they're bypassing people like me, who kind of bike along. They want to be on the highway. How are we, without even shoulders on the road, going to accommodate semi-trucks loaded with tons of gravel and bicyclists? You have the bike path that goes near Commerce Road. They will then cross Lacy, get onto Seminole Highway, and then cross Seminole again to go down the bike path. Two crossings dealing with semi-trucks. That does not seem to be a safe condition. And ultimately, in passing this conditional use permit, unfortunately, you are responsible. You made the decision to allow this to happen.
Mary Ann, I need, that's two minutes. Yeah, sorry. Sorry.
Why don't you go on?
Thank you very much.
But thank you very much. I hope that we will show up at the next two committee meetings and perhaps have even more of our neighborhood there. Public meetings need to be held.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm, you're welcome.
All right, is there anything on the consent agenda that people want to separate out at all? All right, seeing none, all in favor of approving consent agendas, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay? All right, that is approved, administrator's report.
Good evening, everyone. Several items of note. Public Safety Telecommunicators Week is currently going on from April 9th to April 15th, so if you have an opportunity to recognize our public safety telecommunicators working in our Police Department Dispatch Center, I would encourage you to do so. The Police Department is holding one of its monthly community meetings on Thursday, April 20th at 5:30 PM. The meeting will be held at the Fairways Clubhouse at 2301 Traceway Drive. The Forestry Department is holding an Arbor Day Tree Planting Event at Southdale Park on Saturday, April 29th, from 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM. As a reminder, Sine and Lacy Road intersection remains closed for road construction. It's anticipated that that will reopen in late May or early June. And is a preemptive informational item, after that intersection opens, East Sherrill and Sine will then close for further improvements later this summer. Lacy Road Project from Seminole Highway to Fitch-Rona Road is anticipated to have work beginning later this month and beginning in earnest in late May or early June. The Fire Department has hired a new division chief, Mark Malekish. His start date is April 17th. And we have also hired a new neighborhood navigator. This will be our second neighborhood navigator. Herseli Rios has been hired for that particular neighborhood navigator position. And then finally, as a reminder, we have the organizational meeting for the City Council next Tuesday, April 18th at 5:15 PM. There will be a photo taken of the council, so please bear in mind, whatever you wear will be photographed. Heads up. Whoever is selected to be council president should be prepared to identify the elected official appointments to the Finance, Public Safety, and Personnel Committees. And I would anticipate Mayor-elect Radifrada being prepared to share elected official appointments to at least the Plan Commission and Library Board, since those meet in advance of the April 25th council meeting. Any questions for me?
Joe. Between Carmen and Herseli, is that her name?
Yes.
How is like the work being, are they each assigned to different neighborhoods or...
So I don't have that information. The grant funding provides 20 hours total per week for both navigators combined, and I know Deanna is working with both of them to determine where their areas of responsibility will be. I can follow up on that and see if she has that information and report back.
Please.
Yeah, there she is. Actually, she's on the line.
Deanna, did you hear the question?
I did, yeah. So under the Dane County Grant, can everybody hear me okay?
We can.
Okay, great. Under the Dane County Grant, the neighborhood of focus is solely the North Fish Hatch Tree Neighborhood, and so the, all the Leopold School, that early childhood zone, is the focus for both of the neighborhood navigators.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? All right, seeing none, we can move on. Randy, anything on Plan Commission you want to add?
No, nothing additional to add, thank you.
All right, Public Works, Dave, you taking these?
Yeah, just give me one sec here, I'm having a little trouble with my computer. Bear with me. All right, I'll move approval, Resolution R 6323, approving diesel pump dispenser replacement.
Second.
Sent by Jay, did Public Works approve?
Public Works approved.
Did Finance approve?
Finance approved.
All right, what's this, Dave?
Well, we, you know, our trucks that use diesel, number of them in the city, our pump is about 30 years old, and it's not working, and our replacement parts, if we could get them, we maybe would, could repair it, but we're not able to get replacement parts for this, so made the decision to replace, replace the pump, and you know, it has a card, a card reading system, you know, so we're able to allocate, allocate the fuel to specific vehicles for tracking and, and other issues, so the crew, you know, they've looked at this and determined that repairing, repairing this isn't, isn't a viable option, given its age and unavailability of replacement parts.
All right, any questions at all on that one? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay? That is approved. Next one, Dave.
Next, I move approval, Resolution R 7123.
Actually, Dave, sorry to interrupt you, but I'm told that actually this has to be postponed to the next meeting, the 25th.
Okay.
So if you could move to postpone, that'd be great.
I would move postponement of Resolution R 7123 until, would it be next council meeting or...
Yes, yep, on the 25th.
Second.
The next council meeting, okay.
All right, sent by Gabriella, and did Public Works approve this?
Public Works did approve, yes.
Did Park Commission approve? Did Finance?
Finance postponed.
All right, Chad, you want to speak to why it's postponing?
Yeah, the CSM has not been recorded yet. That was the responsibility of the developer to get that recorded in order for us to accept these improvements, so we've had to postpone this based upon the update we received this afternoon from the developer.
Just a quick question, have these improvements been installed yet?
I don't know if they've been installed. I think this was actually to award the improvements, the contract itself, it's not the actual acceptance of the improvements yet.
Yeah, I don't think they've done any work yet this year.
Yeah, the fence, you know, the fence is around the area, but the improvements inside it, they don't look like they were done when I drove by.
All right, anyone else? All right, all in favor of postponing, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? All right, that is postponed. Do you know this next one has to be postponed, Dave?
I did not know that, no.
If you can postpone to the next one again.
R 7423, acceptance of Lacy Road and Seminole Highway reconstruction bids.
Second.
Sent by Gabriella, and did Public Works approve this?
Public Works did approve, yes.
What did Finance do?
We postponed.
All right, Chad, what's, why is this getting postponed?
Yeah, this is getting postponed because, as you may recall, there was a developer agreement with Promega that would help facilitate and oversee construction of the Lacy Road Project near Commerce Park Drive. Due to scope increase as well as delays in the project, the city and Promega have agreed that they are no longer responsible for their role in the oversight of the road construction project. So we are needing to update, amend our developer agreement, subdivision improvement agreement, and I think one other document, and that has been referred out at this meeting through the consent agenda, and it'll be back to council in two weeks for consideration. So we need that taken care of in order to approve the, or accept the bid for the project because there is grant funding tied to this project.
All right, any questions at all? All right, seeing none, all in favor of postponing, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? All right, that is postponed, next one.
I'll move approval of Resolution R 7523, approving contract with FGM Architects or Architectural Engineering Services or Police Services Facility.
Second.
Sent by Jay, and did Public Works approve?
Public Works approved.
Did Finance approve?
Finance approved.
All right, do you want to speak to this one, Dave?
I'll just, I'm going to just say a little bit, and I think Tim is on, but at Public Works, Paul Woodard, you know, our former city engineer, has been instrumental in working, you know, on this, and he gave a, he gave a brief on the selection of this firm. They've done this type of work before, and, and he was, we believe we're comfortable with the project management team, but Tim, if you're on, maybe you could speak to this a little more detail.
And Paul's also here, just FYI, if you need him to say anything, if you want to say anything, after Tim does Paul. Go ahead, Tim, sorry.
Sure.
Oh, is Paul on? Okay, I, I would just let Paul speak if he's on.
Go ahead, Tim, you can, I'm okay with you speaking. Dave doesn't run this meeting, I do.
Sir, on February 15th, 2023, four proposals were received. The Police Facility Review Committee reviewed all of the proposals and selected FGM Architects. For an interview on March 21st, 2023, FGM was determined to be the most experienced and qualified, having completed numerous police facility projects. And this resolution is approving the selection of FGM Architects for the design of the police facility in a not-to-exceed amount of $1.748 million.
Paul, is there anything that you would like to add? All right, available for questions though? All right, questions, comments at all, Jay?
Yeah, I'm going to vote against this because I still do not believe that this location that has been chosen is the correct location. So I expect it's going to pass anyway and that we're going to plow ahead with making, continuing to add to the mistakes that we continue to make, but I'm going to vote against it.
Gabriella?
I also just wanted to summarize too what we talked about a little in Finance, I had some questions about the budget because the, the architecture firm lays out pretty clearly that they anticipate that the budget to build the facility will be 30 million, which is above what we have allocated in the, in the CIP. I believe the CIP has about 23 million for construction and 2 million for design, so we'll obviously have to make a decision at CIP time to make that change, but there is that, you know, obviously that gap between this contract and when we talk about it at CIP, and Paul was kind enough at Finance to explain that, you know, there'll be a lot of public engagement in the lead up to, you know, making those final decisions, but I do think we should keep that in mind, that the budget that would be approved last year does not match the budget that the architecture firm is, is saying is necessary, and so that's what's in their heads as they design it, and it doesn't match. So I thought we should, I should flag that and something we'll need to keep in mind as we, as we go into the CIP later this year.
Everything's a lot more expensive to build nowadays, unfortunately. All right, anything else? Seeing nothing else.
Roll call requested.
All right, we can do a roll call. Tracy, you ready? Whenever you're ready.
I'm ready. Alder Allen?
No.
Alder Radifrada?
Yes.
Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herps?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Outstanding.
Alder Strassman?
Aye.
Alder Udell?
Aye.
Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, that passes, great. Anything else, Dave, for Public Works for now? All right, Park Commission?
I move approval of Resolution R-73-23, approving installation and purchase of a new playground and swing set, a structure for Clayton Road Park.
Second.
Sent by Jay, did Parks approve?
Yes.
Did Finance approve?
Finance approved.
All right, what's this about, Jay?
Yeah, this is another park on Clayton Road that we received four bids, and also we sent a neighborhood survey to get their input, and, and there were two, two bids that the neighbors they really like, but one of them was, the installation was supposed to happen next year in June 24, so Park Commission selected lead construction proposal that, for $40,000, and it's going to be installed this year by summer.
All right, other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, we can go ahead and vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? All right, that is approved, anything else for Park Commission?
Sorry, we have a lengthy meeting, and we discussed the CIP for all the parks-related project. We also talked about the Southdale Park update, and also we discussed the Seminole Mountain Bike Trail Memorando of Understanding between the Capitol and the Capitol of and the Pathfinder. So that's it.
All right, thank you. Before we go to the Library Board, I'd like to actually ask if someone will do a motion to move up the Public Safety and Human Resources Agenda Item to now. I think Matt's probably here for that, so we can get him out of here.
So moved.
Moved by Gabriella, sent by Jay, all in favor of moving Public Safety and Human Services up to now, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? Any opposed, nay? All right, let's see, Dave, do you want to do the motion?
Yep, so I'll move approval, resolution R sixty-nine twenty-three, amending the twenty-twenty-three Grants Donations Fund Budget for Police Equipment.
Second.
Sent by Randy, did Public Safety approve?
Public Safety approved.
Did Finance approve?
Finance approved.
All right, and we do need a two-thirds majority on this one, do you want to speak to this, Matt?
Sure, absolutely, this is the, our third budget amendment utilizing the Safer Communities Initiative grant funding that was provided to the Police Department by the Department of Administration, this is roughly thirty-two thousand three hundred dollars worth of approved police equipment, I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody has regarding the specific items.
Any questions at all? All right, seeing none.
We grilled Matt pretty hard in Public Safety.
Good, all right, perfect, tables returned. All right, seeing nothing else, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? All right, that is approved, thank you, Dave, anything else on Public Safety?
No, nothing.
All right, then we'll go back to Library Board.
We are meeting next week.
All right, Commission, E.G. Noel?
Uh, we're meeting this week, but just a reminder, twenty-third, Sunday the twenty-third, Pancake Breakfast at the Senior Center, we're still looking for volunteers to, to serve and cook, and, you know, we're looking to, we're upping our fundraising goal again with, for the patio, so we're, we're looking for more donations on that, that's all, thanks.
And I know earlier today, we heard, we heard that they expect a large crowd, six-hundred people maybe, so get there early, there's signs all over the city, so. They think about six-hundred people are gonna be here for the Pancake Breakfast is what they're planning on anyway, so, yeah, all right, RCC?
Uh, the waterway cleanup is this Saturday, April fifteenth, from nine AM to eleven AM, and there are going to be four locations, Duns Marsh, Quarry Hill, Swan Creek, and Yarmouth Greenway, the city provides the trash bags and the gloves and all the things that you'll need, so just come over around nine AM, get your supplies, and come clean up the waterways, I don't know if you've seen after the snow has melted, but there is a lot of trash in these waterways now, so it's important to get this out before the rains start coming in April, so, yeah, there's that, and then also I want to flag the Spring Recycling Day is April twenty-ninth, from eight AM to eleven AM, so get your electronics recycling ready and any of your confidential paper shredding, bring it to City Hall sometime during that time period, some of the, the electronics have fees, so it's worth checking the website and making sure that which ones, what items you're bringing in if they do have a fee, and then obviously you can bring your med drop as well, but you can do that at any time of the year, you can always do that in the Police Department, they have the med drop year-round, so April twenty-ninth, eight to eleven AM for the recycling event, and then hope to see some of you at the waterway cleanup this Saturday.
All right, and what about TTC?
Uh, we meet this Thursday.
All right, Seda?
Next meeting, April twenty-seventh, seven AM.
Agribusiness?
Nothing to report.
All right, EMS?
Our next meeting's on the twentieth.
All right, Bike Committee?
Um, no report.
All right, Tree Advisory? Julia?
Uh, no report.
All right, Hammocks Preservation?
No report.
How about Housing Advisory?
Uh, no report.
All right, Healthy Neighborhoods?
We met and we did stuff.
Ooh, we got a resolution and everything.
On, on behalf of the Healthy Neighborhoods Committee, I would move approval of resolution R sixty-eight dash twenty-three, Healthy Neighborhoods Grant Program Recipient Awards.
Second.
Sent by Gabriella, you want to speak to this?
I would love to, so we received a number of applications, about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars worth, the, we had eighty-eight thousand dollars budgeted to give away, so we couldn't fund all the programs that were submitted, but having said that, we did, we did approve seven programs that will be happening this year, hopefully, we used the entire seventy-three thousand dollars of budget that we had in the, in the general amount, and then we used thirteen thousand five hundred of the fifteen thousand dedicated for Southdale, so we didn't get, we didn't get quite everything to do, to use up all the Southdale funding, but there's only fifteen hundred dollars left, so I'm sure we'll be able to use it next year, and the, the staff memo has a listing of the programs that were, that were approved by our committee, and I would ask the council to approve this as submitted.
All right, questions, comments? All right, seeing none, we can go ahead and vote, all in favor of approving, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? That is approved, anything else for Healthy Neighborhoods?
Uh, no.
All right, moving along, Police Facility Oversight Committee, Jim?
Yeah, now that the architect has been selected, that contract approved, Paul will be putting together a schedule for having the actual meetings.
All right, Finance Committee?
Okay, very good, motion to approve ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash O dash zero-seven, amending appointed officers' ordinances, chapter eight, article four, sections eight through one hundred, eight through one hundred and six, and eight through one hundred and thirteen of the Pittsburgh General Code of Ordinances.
Second.
Sent by Gabriella, did Finance approve?
Finance approved.
Are you speaking to this or letting Misty?
Well, no, I'm gonna have Misty since it impacts her and she's well-versed in it.
All right, Misty, go ahead.
Thank you, uh, so there are two positions defined in the state statute, one is city comptroller, which is responsible for making sure things are within budget and signing contracts, and the other is city treasurer, which is responsible for making sure that all the money we received is posted to the right account, the money that we have meets our cash needs, et cetera, and so especially with us getting the additional accountant position, we're looking at reorganizing the duties within the Finance Department, and looking at those two positions, it looks like they better align with different positions and what are currently outlined in the ordinances, so right now in the ordinance, the city comptroller is the city administrator, and the city treasurer is the finance director, we're proposing to change that, so the comptroller becomes the finance director, and the city treasurer becomes the accounting manager, again, because as finance director, I'm looking at contracts, I'm doing pre approvals, and as accounting manager, she's supervising all of the cash and treasury activities, so it just seems those positions are better aligned with those other positions within the city.
All right, any questions for Misty? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? That one's approved, next one, Randy?
All right, motion to approve ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash O dash zero-eight, updating Pittsburgh ordinances to replace mayor's signature with comptroller's signature on city drafts, order checks, and transfer orders by amending section, or sections ten dash three-three-nine C and ten dash three-four-two of the Pittsburgh General Code of Ordinances.
Second.
Sent by Jay, did Finance approve?
Finance approved.
All right, Misty, you want to speak to this one?
Yes, please, so this is one of those that falls under Finance Department looking for ways to streamline our operations, so right now, the signatories on our checks are the mayor, the treasurer, and the city clerk, that doesn't mean that they're physically signing all of the checks, staff simply prints their signature onto our checks, but we still have to go to the banks and change all of our signatories every time the mayor turns over, um, so the proposal would be that instead, the signatures would be the city clerk as it is now, the city treasurer as it is now, and then the city comptroller, so the mayor still has access to all of the information, you guys still see all of the checks that we cut on each of the council meetings, the preapproval process that the mayor would see would still be the same, it's just whoever's signature is signed or printed onto those checks, and it would save us from having to change the signatories at the banks each time it turns over.
Jay, question?
Yeah, we tried to do this back in nineteen ninety-five, and the reason it didn't happen was because the mayor at the time wanted to, wanted, he wanted to sign every single check that went out the building, now, he was retired and he was here all the time, so he had time to do it, but I, I always had a lot of reservations, even when I was the mayor, about the mayor signing checks, so I'm glad that this is being shifted this way, and this is a long time coming.
I didn't even realize my name was on the checks, I'll be honest. You get directed deposit, I never see the checks. Any other questions? All right, yeah.
So, Misty, how are you gonna do with the internal control, do you check this with the auditors that they are okay?
Yeah, so again, all we're changing is whose signature is printed on the checks, so all of our internal controls as far as who signs up on the checks, who is different than the person that does the printing of the checks, who is different than the person balancing, all of that remains the same, so all of our fundamental controls are still in place.
All right, seeing nothing else, we can go ahead and vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? All right, that is approved, anything else in Finance?
Uh, no, nothing else, thank you.
All right, what about Personnel?
No report.
All right, then we can go down to New Business, Director Furrow, this seems like something Gabriella might want to do a resolution on.
Yes, please.
Go ahead.
Uh, I move approval of resolution R sixty-nine twenty-three, oh, nope, wrong one, I move approval of resolution R eighty-two twenty-three, creating a pilot program designating the month of May, twenty-twenty-three as No-Mo May.
Second.
Second in motion.
Sent by, I'll give Dave one, all right, and I do have one resident who had emailed us in support, I support the passing of this resolution as standing city policy, along with appreciation of the staff work in preparation of the resolution, pollinators, especially native insects, are affected by climate change and impacts of commercial and housing developments, a temporary respite of a No-Mo May will allow wild native pollinators an improved opportunity to recharge their bodies and food storage after winter with energy-rich spring pollen, that's Troy Klein, who lives here in Pittsburgh, so this is something that we talked about last year, actually, but it was kind of at the end of the month, right before we started, and we don't have a whole lot of time, and something that I said that we'd bring back because I know a lot of people are interested in this, and so Phil Groupie knows, starting this, is a pilot this year, I think he's already had some ideas to improve it next year, he wants to see how it goes, see what other thing, other people are doing, and so it's something that, I think, at some point in time, we can make kind of an official ordinance change too, but at least for now, kind of piloting it, we're gonna be doing a lot of information, sending information out to the community, I think we're looking into if we're gonna be able to have signs, or at least some kind of sign that someone can print off on their own, so that they know that this is going on, but ultimately, it's something that a lot of communities are doing, and the last year there was a lot of interest in, so I thought it'd be great to bring this forward, and I can open up to questions, comments at all, Joe?
Just word of advice, if you do No-Mo May, don't use a non-motorized mower, it'll take a really long time to get your lawn mowed, but I fully support this, so, yeah, I'm, I'm with it.
All right, Gabriella?
Uh, just one note, I, we had a long, good discussion about this at RCC, which is, and I, I think it's a great first step for us, I do think we need to think about in the future, and we talked about this at RCC, about how to make sure that our ordinances allow for more native plants to be lawns instead of just turf grass, because as much as No-Mo May is great, and it does help, having native plants in people's yards is what, long-term is really like the best for, for insect and pollinator populations, and so however we can adjust our ordinances to allow for, facilitate that for people that live in the city would be a good long-term solution, but I do hope that some people participate, and I look forward to more clover on like, on the, in the yards.
And if your yard doesn't have any dandelions and clover, it actually doesn't do much, but gives habitat for bunnies, I guess, Shannon, do you want to comment?
Um, this is just if people want to do the No-Mo May, you don't have to not mow your lawn, I just want to make that, you know.
Absolutely.
People, okay, thank you.
Yep, all right, seeing nothing else, we can go ahead and vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, that is approved, Mayor and Alder reports, I'm gonna go last today because I'm not gonna be here after this, and you all will, so we'll start with, it's actually, District Three starts today, Jay?
All's quiet in District Three except for the construction going on on Sign Road.
Shannon?
Yeah, I just wanted to say for people that are taking the routes through the neighborhoods, please slow down.
All right, Jim?
No report.
Randy?
Uh, no report.
All right, Dave?
Uh, just Saturday, last Saturday was Easter egg in District One, we had a great Easter egg hunt over in the park behind the Boys and Girls, and then the afternoon, we had another one in, in the Jamestown, and Joe and I have a bicycle giveaway, a donation giveaway planned for probably the afternoon on Saturday, the twenty-ninth.
All right, Joe?
Yeah, in addition to that, there will be two bike repair workshops, one on May twenty-fourth, and one at May thirty-first, both will be four to seven, the first one will be at Luna's, and then the second one will be likely in King James Way Park.
All right, thank you, Julia?
So, so I want to announce that, you mentioned that in your report chat, there is gonna be a Police District Community Meeting in District Two on April twenty, from five-thirty to seven o'clock, in the Fairways Clubhouse, located in two-three-zero-one Tracy Way Drive, so everyone is invited, we are trying to do this invite in Spanish too, and also want to thank Mayor Aaron for your service, and this is your last meeting, and good luck, and, you know, thank you very much for your service.
Gabriella?
One thing for me, the B-cycles, I think many of you've heard that they're coming to Pittsburgh, but I recently learned that, they are here, yes, thank you, they are here, they have come, but there actually is a code, Bike the Berg, that you can use to get a pass, a free pass from April first through April thirtieth of this year, there is a lot more information on the Pittsburgh Chamber website, but yeah, Bike the Berg on the B-cycle app, seems like it'll get you some free bike rides in the month of April, so check it out.
Joe, do you have a question?
Yeah, I'm a bad Bike Committee member, I forgot to mention the event, I forgot to mention the event on the tenth, Chad, what, do you know, do you remember what the time is on that, they're, like, we're gonna ribbon cut?
Yeah. May tenth, yes.
It's on my calendar.
I'm sorry, guys.
Don't worry.
They got a couple more meetings before it happens, I think it's at like four.
May tenth? Uh, May tenth at four-thirty, at fifty-five-hundred East Cheryl Parkway, which I believe will be the Ogora Pavilion, more than likely.
All right, all right, so last week, I got a notification that Fact TV had actually nominated me for an award, and I was awarded a Front of Access Award by their state body, and it was for all the support that it's had that I've provided for Fact TV throughout the years, and the reality is, is that, a couple things, one is, it's very humbling and honored, I'm very honored that they nominated for me, that for me, but it is something that the whole council does participate in, and the whole council has supported Fact TV, and so I think that's just a microcosm of being in this role, where, yes, the mayor is the figurehead, and the person who's out there, and takes the arrow sometimes, but also gets the awards, but the reality is, is the entire council that does these things, and I think, I was just kind of fitting, I think, for me to, to see that, and to know that that's not something that I did on my own by any means, it's something that all of us up here had done, I've worked with a lot of people in this role. It's, I grew up here, my family, some of my neighbors are here tonight, actually, for growing up, was out in the middle of nowhere back then, still is kind of the middle of nowhere, actually, after all these years, but I just want to thank staff, we're, we have phenomenal staff here, we're very fortunate as a city, I can go through and talk about every department in the city, and the great things that they do on a daily basis for the residents that, of this city, we're extremely fortunate, they work their butt off, they are so dedicated, and really just appreciate that. And also, and also the residents, the residents put their faith in me, it's been a great four years as mayor, two years on council before that, I was on Parks before that, so it's been an honor, I'm not going anywhere, still around, happy to help out with anything, it would be nice to have my Tuesdays back free, even though the twenty-fifth, you're making me come back anyway, I'm not staying the whole time, though, I get to leave early, which is nice, but just, you know, thank you to your residents, thank you to my family, it's truly been an honor, so with that, next week, all of you have to come in here, five, five fifteen, next council meeting is the twenty-fifth, can be the whole is April twenty-sixth, then that's all I got. Yeah?
I want to mention something, that I want to, to say thank you to District Two, Resident-
Want to mention something, that I want to, to say thank you to District Two residents for giving me the opportunity for the eight years to serve you. So, and it was a pleasure for me to be in the council for eight years, serving District Two, and and next move to the next level, but thank you very much, gracias a todos.
All right, with that, that's all I have.
Mr. Mayor, I would move for adjournment.
Moved by Jay, sent by Randy, all in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, we are adjourned.